And I'll ask you to take the.
Blake.
Here.
Carberry Montgomery.
Yes.
Obrecht.
Yeah.
Poggi.
Here.
And Russell. Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, ask for a motion and second to through these.
This is Poggi, I move.
Second Montgomery.
Hey, motion by Poggi, I second I, we had, sir, I'll, I'll call out Obrecht today. He was the first one in there, so uh, motion by Poggi, second by Obrecht, any further discussion, if not, roll call please.
Poggi?
Yes.
Obrecht?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, I am going to read the character count statement tonight, I think it's appropriate for tonight. Urbendell is a national leader in character counts endeavoring all types of mode and model of principle trustworthiness, respect, responsibility for a citizen. Tonight's meeting, we expect all participants, lives in respectful manner, uh, consistent with these principles. All right, uh, thank you everyone for being here tonight. The purpose of the tonight's meeting is to interview the candidates, uh, for the temporary city council appointment. Uh, just want to go over a few ground rules, uh, tonight. First of all, uh, we do have the schedule, we're going to be getting started a little bit later than five thirty, but I'm going to give each candidate, uh, up to fifteen minutes, but no more than fifteen minutes. I'm going to be very strict to that tonight, so uh, I will be asking a series of four questions, uh, on behalf of the council. Uh, after those four questions are answered by the can- candidate, uh, to the extent that there's any time, uh, I'll allow council members to uh, ask, let's ask the council members to, uh, ask to be, uh, recognized by me, so if there's more than one question, uh, that I'll, I'll try to keep, we'll fair as far as who gets to ask a question, and we are sure of time. Uh, and again, we'll, fifteen minute, uh, timeframe, uh, in fairness to everyone tonight. Uh, thank you for everyone's participation tonight. Uh, and again, this is that, this is an interview, I know we have some folks on here tonight, members of the public, uh, there, I will not be, uh, taking any comments from anybody outside of the candidates tonight, this is strictly an interview tonight, so this is uh, an opportunity to address or, or to, um, make any comments tonight, so the public can certainly sit in and listen on this, so please, uh, keep muted and please do not make any comments during the meetings tonight. I'd ask everybody, if you're not speaking, if you're not the interviewee, uh, if you could please keep muted also, so we can cut down on the background noise, that would also be very helpful, so please make sure, as well, if you're not being interviewed, so with that, I show five through three P M. So we'll start that as a time, and Julie, who can chew, you're the first interviewee tonight, so I'm going to start with you, are you ready Julie?
I am.
All right, well, welcome. Uh, first of all, please give us a brief overview of your involvement in the community.
Okay, well, I've been a member of the Urbendell community for the past thirty years. Um, I've raised my children here, um, they attended Saint Pius School as well at Urbendell Schools. I, um, was one of the task force members that, uh, was, um, uh, did the food pantry, uh, got the, um, people together, I did that through Saint Pius Church, and I was one of the, uh, task uh, leaders for that, uh, working with the city and churches and individuals, um, to get that off. I'm very proud of that accomplishment and, uh, what we've done. Um, I also am involved in a lot of, I, I run a nonprofit, I am not, my name is not Project Iowa, I don't know WebEx very well, so I don't know how to change my name, obviously, um, so I run a nonprofit, I also am on the board of three nonprofits, so I do a lot of work about making our community better, um, I'm, uh, on the, I run Project Iowa, which is a, a work-based, uh, nonprofit. I, um, have just started as the president of the Dream Team, which is a, um, bicycle, um, uh, program for youth at risk, uh, that they do rag bri, I'm, uh, the president of Good Vibes Movement on board. So all of these are really about making community and, uh, making the community better, so that's, um, kind of who I am, I also was very, um, involved in Get Out The Vote, um, in Urbendell for this last, um, election. Um, and so I was a leader and did some organizing with Donna and Richard Linger, um, to get out the vote here in Urbendell.
All right, thank you Julie.
Mm-hmm.
Question number two, why are you interested in serving on the city council?
Um, well, I think this is a really, um, unique and interesting opportunity, um, being that it's really not an election. Um, you know, I can come in without the politics around it, and I can really just be a concerned citizen, um, and, and, and get involved and learn um, what's going on with genera- genuine interests, um, and be really dedicated to, um, what's happening in Urbendell, um, I'm I think that what we have here is unique, um, in Urbendell.
You froze there for a moment, so maybe if you could start back, we lost a little bit of what you said there, so.
Okay, um, just about, um, that, um, I'm very committed to Urbendell, I do believe that it's a unique community. I want to, um, really bring a unique perspective, I think the work that I do, I think that all voices should be amplified, and I think that that's really hard to do, um, in cities um, around, but my work that I do allows me to really be in contact with a lot of different communities in which their voices aren't necessarily heard, um, my background is I'm a social worker, and I practice at the macro level, which is really the system level. So I'm really interested in making systemic changes that then involve everyone, as I look through the priorities of the Urbendell City Council, what you guys have set forth, a lot of it is about community, and about building a better community, and about bringing everyone in, and housing and all of that, and that's a lot of where my expertise lies. Um, so that's what I'd like to give and contribute to the, um, city council, I think, uh, my experience working at a community level will, uh, lend a lot to the city council.
Okay. Uh, third question is, what can you bring to the city council that will benefit the community?
Well, what I bring to any project that I'm engaged in is my energy, um, my commitment. Um, I'm a problem solver, that's what social workers do, um, you have great candidates, um, I, I looked at all of the people that are, are, um, applying for this position. Um, I think that, like I said, what I can bring is I, innovation, um, energy, I will commit a hundred percent to, um, anything that I'm on or a part of, I believe in doing my best, um, I believe in people, um, I believe that we need relationships, and that's the only way to build community. Um, and I think that is something that I'm uniquely qualified with, is to bring in new relationships, to, um, to honor relationships that have been here, um, and so I think that's what I bring, is really my energy, my problem solving, uh, my innovation, and then my connections to, um, marginalized communities, um, within our, within our, within our city.
All right, and then the last question is, is there anything else that you'd like to add, or ask us, tonight?
Yeah, I, I think I was just asking, um, I, I would like to know if there are specific skillsets that you feel as a city council um, would be beneficial, um, for the work and the priorities you set out for twenty twenty-one, um, that would be an asset to the, to the city council, are there specific skillsets that you're, you're seeking or looking for?
All right, well, I will, we have, uh, sure, we have about six minutes left, so I'm gonna go around and uh, I'll just go around on the horn and let, uh, any of the council members answer that for, to their perspective, so Dave, I'll start with you, if you'd like to start with that.
Open-mindedness about all issues coming to, uh, number two, two, takes a lot of time. Uh, I think you'll find that it, and I think the other council members will agree, this job is not just show up on a Tuesday every couple of weeks and push a button, there's a lot of background, that you have to have a kind of thick skin, because you'll be getting a list of emails from constituents about different issues. Open-mindedness, I think, and they're willing to go to work.
Thank you.
Dave, Matt?
Not to repeat, the one I would include is, uh, communication, uh, being able to communicate with your fellow councilpeople, the mayor, city staff, is this because we all ha- it's not one vote, and then you have cut, under control, you have to work within a kind of a legislative body, so being able to communicate, adapt, compromise, be to, in order to forward your agenda, I think is extremely important.
All right, thanks Matt, Ron?
I think it's important that we have, uh, people on the, on the council who are well-connected with the community. Uh, the only way we know what the community is thinking is through what each of us bring, and, uh, so I think the diversity in that, it's important.
Thanks Ron, Bridgette?
Um, I, I agree with what Matt and Ron said about communications and connectivity in the community. Um, I think, um, one of the biggest issues that we're coming out of twenty twenty with is the, uh, working on equity issues, um, and I would really like to see someone that can, um, jump in and help as we move forward, addressing, uh, some of the issues from our, uh, meetings that we had over the summer.
Thank you.
Bridgette?
Adam?
Uh, yeah, so five, four great ideas so far, um, I guess the, the one thing I would add is just being able to sometimes operate when you don't have full knowledge, with there's so much broad, uh, topics that we cover, there's no way any one of us can understand them all by any means, and that's so reliance on staff and, and being able to trust the process at times.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, Julie, you have again about six minutes left, I'm gonna turn it back around and see if any of the council members have any final questions for you before we move on.
Can I, can I respond to?
Absolutely, absolutely, I'll give you a chance to respond.
Sure, thank you, um, I, I appreciate all of that that you, um, shared with me, um, I think that, um, I, the commitment that I'm willing to make, um, I, I realize you guys work a lot, I was looking at your schedule, looking over the agendas, and I'm sure there's work outside of all of those meetings, being up to date on what happens. Um, the one thing I didn't include, um, and when Bridgette brought up racial equity, is that I am, um, an adoptive mother, and so I do have a son, um, of color. Um, I was at the listening session with all of you, um, it's very important to me, the racial equity, I did follow up with Bob and others about what we're going to do about that. Um, so I do have some experience and some, um, some good experience and some bad experience, um, but experience nonetheless, so I have two children of color that went through Urbendell Schools, um, and that have been a part of the community, um, and so I do believe I bring some information and knowledge, not not full-on, I'm not black or brown, but, um, I do have some of that that I think I could lend, and that would be also a, um, asset um, to the, to the city council, so if anyone that wants to ask questions, I'm open to that.
All right, thank you Julie, uh, again, we have a few minutes left, so is there anyone on the council that wants to ask your question?
This is Councilman Blake.
Yes.
Quick question, uh, you kind of, in your, what are you, why are you interested in serving, kind of had some broad, is there, uh, broad goals? Is there any specific issues or specific items that you were looking at, um, that you would like to tackle over your nine to ten months while I'm gone?
Um, well, to me, and with my line of work, looking at your five goals, um, I feel like my, um, my skillset is really in the premier community, the great place for families, um, really looking at that community, um, thing, and then the great neighborhoods, old and new. Um, a lot of the work that I've done and have been involved with really is about community organizing and community building, and I feel like, um, that, it, those two areas um, seem like I, my skillset match, but I'm open to learning all kinds of new things, um, with the other goals as well, but those two stood out to me, um, Matt, just because of where I've come from.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other last questions from the council? Julie, any final comments you want to add?
No, I just really appreciate this opportunity, and I think it speaks highly of our city and what we have, that you had nine candidates put in for this one-year position, so I think that says a lot about our involvement and what we want to do to make this community great, and so, uh, like I said, I looked at the candidates, and you guys will have a hard job, and, uh, because there are great people on there that are qualified, and I hope that I'm, um, considered to be one of those that can contribute to our community, so thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you Julie, and I, I guess I'm remiss in saying at the beginning of this too, thank you, thank you for your application and your, uh, willingness to step up, and I want to thank each and every one, uh, of the candidates here tonight for doing that, because you're right, it's, uh, that speaks volumes, but also speaks volumes about the folks that have applied, and, and, uh, so I want to thank each and every one of you for stepping up and, and, uh, volunteering to, to do this, so. All right, we are, we'll move on then, thanks Julie, and, uh, Tom, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I'm showing the time, just at five forty-six, so Tom, are you ready? You're muted, Tom. You're muted, there you go, there you go.
All right, good evening.
All right, good evening, welcome, Tom Gaiman, uh, Tom, uh, the, we're again, we'll, we're gonna stick to a fifteen-minute, uh, assess, as I said, from the beginning, so we'll start with you at five forty-six. Uh, if you could please give us a brief overview of your involvement in the community.
You bet, uh, well, first of all, I, I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, the city for, for the opportunity, and I agree with what's been said earlier, I think it's, uh, pretty rewarding to see the number of potential, uh, candidates that we have. Um, as most of you may know, uh, I served for twelve years on the Urbendell City Council, uh, I enjoyed every minute of it. Uh, my, uh, last council meeting, and I was done on twelve thirty-one of nineteen. And during that time, uh, it was just a very, very exciting, uh, time, uh, over that twelve years, a lot of growth happened in Urbendell. And, uh, it was exciting to be part of that, um, so, you know, as the, uh, commission, or as the, uh, city continues to grow, uh, there was just a lot of different opportunities. I was also, um, appointed, uh, by the mayor for, uh, to head the C I P program, which is the Community Improvement Program, for two years, and I chaired that. Uh, very great, uh, program, kind of lays out the opportunities, uh, for, uh, the infrastructure and what the city has plans for the upcoming years. Uh, I've been on the Urbendell Chamber, the Urbendell Chamber is really where I got involved, uh, not only chamber activities, but uh, just the passion for some of the city business as well. Um, I am now a member of the Urbendell Economic Development, uh, Board, and I've really enjoyed that economic development as it relates to Urbendell, has, uh, been a real passion of mine. Uh, looking and growing our business community is, uh, is one of my passions, and so I've, I've had a, uh, many, many years of that, uh, I am a commercial broker. Uh, I started my own business two years ago, uh, Performance Realty, and, uh, it's been very successful, and I've actually done, um, some business in Urbendell. And, uh, I really enjoy the opportunity to work not only with the small business, uh, community members, but, uh, all the community in terms of, um, you know, helping them with real estate needs. So, you know, I've lived in the community for thirty-eight years, um, I feel like I've got a lot of, uh, positive, uh, skillsets that will certainly help, uh, the council, uh, in, uh, in, in Matt's, uh, uh, absence, and I wish, uh, Matt all the best, uh, and I appreciate his service, uh. And so with that, um, I'm just very excited about a potential opportunity, and I look at it, uh, you know, as, as a one-year assignment. And, uh, I want to take my energy and my experience, uh, both on the budgetary, uh, commitment that, uh, is very demanding to make sure that we put out a, a, a very competitive budget, so, um, looking forward to, um, to that opportunity.
All right, thanks Tom. Uh, number two, why are you interested in serving on the city council?
Well, it's, it's, uh, like I said, it's, it's been a passion of mine, um, and this seems to work well for where I sit right now. Um, my business, um, is, you know, some days it's a full-time job, and other days it's a part-time job, so I do have, uh, more time, uh, to devote. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, um, I certainly understand the time commitment. Uh, I certainly entertain, understand, uh, the commitment it takes to, uh, you know, come to the council meetings prepared, um, get all your information read, um, and be prepared to, you know, discuss the issues. Um, and so having the time, and I think having the experience, uh, my experience is current. And I think that is, um, something that's very important right now, particularly, um, as we go into a new year, and, uh, the opportunities that lay ahead, and some of the challenges that lay ahead, so I think my experience, um, as a council member, and my experience in terms of dealing with uh, some of the issues that we have, uh, in the community, um, I look forward to that, and, and I'm committing the time to, uh, to deliver on that.
All right, thanks Tom. What can you bring to the city council that will benefit the community?
Well, as mentioned earlier, I too have a lot of solid relationships, um, in the community, uh, my kids all went through, uh, Urbendell Schools, um, and, and just the relationship that the city has with the school district has always been positive. Um, so I think from a relationship standpoint, both as a, as just a residential citizen in Urbendell, as well as a, a, a business, um, operator in Urbendell. You know, I think the knowledge that I have, um, I, I stay, uh, I stay current on what the issues are in Urbendell. Uh, I try to reach out, um, on an occasion with, uh, the various members, uh, in the community, as well as the various, uh, staff people at city, at the city, just so I can be up to speed on what those issues may be, and, and how I can help in, in any small way, so I know in, in, uh, oh eight, oh seven, oh eight, oh nine, we had a pretty serious financial crisis, and uh, I was very engaged during that, uh, particular time, that was a challenging time for the city, and, um, so I think my financial, um, analysis and looking at budgets and understanding how the city process works from a budgeting perspective, I think is very important.
All right, so, lastly, then, is there anything else you'd like to add or ask of the council?
No, um, I think you guys do a fantastic job, I've, I enjoyed my opportunity, um, you know, I certainly have the energy, I have, I think the skillsets that are needed to, uh, just fill in and, uh, and, and do a good job at that, and not um, have to learn, um, as you go, uh, but to be able to provide, uh, my experience and, and, uh, and, and knowledge to, you know, to just benefit the process for, uh, this one year.
All right, thanks Tom. All right, we have some time, is there anyone on the council that would like to ask Tom any questions? Now, if so, I'll recognize you then now. Matt?
Councilman Blake here, and I will probably have the same question for everybody. Um, is there a specific goal that you have in mind over the next nine to ten months while I'm gone, that you would like to see accomplished uh, here, on, uh, with, with your position on the city council?
Yeah, you bet, uh, Matt, great question, and I think what really kind of propelled me to, to, to consider it, um, was twofold, one, you know, I'm just recently, and you say recently, it was obviously this time last year, um, I had just completed twelve years. And so I want to take that experience and be able to help my fellow, you know, council folks that are here, uh, tonight, and try to keep that process moving so that we don't have, we don't miss a heartbeat um, in terms of being able to do all the things that, uh, Urbendell as a city are capable of doing. And, and so just being able to, um, you know, be the fill-in, and have the knowledge and have the experience, and being able to, um, you know, look at the big picture of the community over the next year. Um, I think twenty twenty-one will be, will have plenty of opportunities, and it'll have plenty of, uh, of challenges. And I just want to be a part of that and offer my ideas and energy and enthusiasm.
All right, any other questions from the council? Adam?
I've got a question, this is, uh, Bridget Carberry Montgomery, um, I'm wondering if you oh, am I breaking out?
Well, I, I recognized Adam right before that, maybe, maybe. We'll, we'll go with you then. No, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
All right, so, as we've had a back and forth here, Tom, uh, just, I guess, uh, since you've had previous experience, Tom, you've had a year of kind of being sitting on the sidelines, is there something that in that year you've kind of looked back and go, I wish I'd have done different?
Great question, um, you know, I think that, um, when we, the last year that, um, you know, that I was on council, um, was really, um, you know, when I first started, uh, uh, Adam, I guess, when I first started on council, obviously, um, as many of you know, you know, it's a tremendous learning curve to get your hands around uh, how the city operates, and, and I kind of spent those twelve years kind of growing, uh, both myself, um, both personally and professionally as it relates to, you know, city government, and, um, you know, I think one of the things that, uh, I look back on and, uh,
One of the city council, uh, candidates being interviewed.
It required a tremendous amount of time at the end of, uh,
Excuse me, Tom, I'm gonna, there are a couple people that are mute, unmuted, please mute yourself.
Are we good?
Go ahead, sorry Tom.
You know, Adam, and I, you know, I think one of the things that, um, was, was really challenging for me, uh, was, uh, I spent a considerable amount of time uh, on the dark commission, and, um, you know, they have, uh, we completely restructured uh, the, the, uh, commission and the commission, uh, members and, and how that entire process was done, and you know, it was, it was just an opportune time, but it was also a very stressful time, and so, um, you know, just working through all that, um, you know, I look back and maybe there were days I could have done a better job than what I, what I did, um, but the outcome was good in that, uh, we were able to completely, uh, reconstruct the, the commission. And, uh, and we brought in, you know, sixteen, or I think at that time it was eighteen different communities, and, um, so I think it was a, it was a plus, um, but it just required a whole lot of work, and, um, you know, so, and I enjoyed it, but it took a lot of time, and, um, so I just, and there may have been some things that, one, uh, and particularly, you know, that I could have done differently to try to streamline the process, and I worked on that. Um, I worked on that, uh, pretty diligently in terms of figuring out how to, uh, try to streamline the communication process. But when you're dealing with, uh, sixteen to eighteen different communities, uh, it was challenging.
All right, uh, Bridgette, I'll recognize you now.
Um, I was curious if you would continue to follow your, um, you know, previous, um, or had on council, or if you would feel compelled to, uh, follow, uh, what the agenda that Matt has laid out, as you will be filling in for him.
Sure. You know, it, certainly, I look at this position as, you know, I've done, uh, my twelve-year term. I'm looking at this as an opportunity to help, assist, um, I understand where the new council sits, I understand where your goals and objectives are, and I want to be, um, of, uh, I want to be proactive in that, in that, um, in the mission that the current council has. Um, what's the past is the past, um, what's new is new, and I'm certainly willing to, uh, to listen, offer ideas, um, to get the goals that the city has, uh, laid out for this, for this year.
All right, next time, you have one minute left, Tom, any final comments?
Uh, no, I'd like to just, you know, like I said, I think it's been a good, great process, I think I've got, uh, some skillsets that I can bring to the table, and, uh, And I've always enjoyed the opportunity to work. I think one of the things that really make Urbendale unique is the opportunity for this, the mayor, the, the council, the city staff and the residents all have a great relationship and we work well together. And when you have opportunities to deal and see how a lot of the other communities operate, I can tell you Urbendale is very much ahead of the curve. So I look forward to the opportunity and thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you, Tom. And we're right at the end of 15 minutes. So thank you.
You bet.
All right. Next up is Adam Caduce. Adam, I see your name there. Are you a bit ready to go? There you are.
Ready when you are, Bob.
All right, Adam. Well, welcome. At 6:01, we will start with your questions now. Please give us an overview of your involvement in the council.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. And thanks to the council and the staff. This process has been just really positive and appreciate all the information that the staff has shared on how this is going to work. I'm a lifelong Urbendale resident. I was born here. I'm a 33-year resident of Urbendale. A 2005 graduate of Urbendale High School and just a really, really proud Jayhawk. Looking at my service to the community, it's largely been under the appointments of a number of the people that are here today. I started, I'm a 2020, served on the CIP Committee. In 2019, I completed two terms on the Urbendale Economic Development Advisory Board. I was proud to be an inaugural member on that board when we were fortunate enough to have Curtis Brown join the city and help go through a strategic plan for what that office was going to do and get a number of the foundational programs for that office. I currently serve as the Chair of Endow Urbendale, which is our Community Endowment Fund. Just as a personal point of pride, when COVID first hit central Iowa and Urbendale in particular, we put a fundraising drive together and over a matter of just a couple of, really just about a month, raised $60,000 that we were able to give out. And we haven't given it all out. We still have dollars left available to give out in grants for those that were impacted, organizations that are helping families, members of the community and kids in the school. So it's been, it's been a blast to get to serve on that and a really rewarding experience to get to chair Endow Urbendale this year, but I've served on that for a number of years. Previous to that, I served on the Urbendale Education Foundation Board. That's the foundation board for the schools. I've served for the last 10 years as the Chair of Polk County Supervisor Robert Brownell's Campaign and got to watch him work Polk, work in Polk County at a bipartisan manner and be able to enrich our community through the service that he gives to Polk County. And beyond that, my twin brother and I, when we were in middle school and growing up here in Urbendale, started a lawn care business. I've mowed a few of the lawns for the folks that are here today. But it was just a really great opportunity for us to, to learn a lot about customer service and taking care of people and doing what you're saying, doing what you, what you say you're going to do. And we operated that businesses for 15 years here in Urbendale. We were actually incorporated under the, the moniker Urbendale First Lawn Care, although we went by Caduce and Caduce Lawn Care. So I've, I've run these streets. I've, I've mowed a lot of grass in this community and I'm just a very, very proud member of the Urbendale community.
All right. Thanks, Adam. Number two, why are you interested in serving in the city council?
Yeah, well, it's really because I'm just committed to the future of, of our town and our community. Urbendale was a great place to grow up. You know, it had the town of, it had the charm of a small town, but the amenities of being here in the metro. And, you know, you had great schools to go to, great parks and trails. It had a great community identity. We had our community celebration with the Fourth of July. And as my brother and I got to experience, it was a great place to start and grow a business. And all those, I just look at all of those things wouldn't have been possible if it weren't for the community leaders. I mean, I think back to the, the Don and Catherine Brush, the, the Cole Morgans, the EJ Givetti. Those are people that stepped up and said, I'm, I'm ready to serve. And this community wouldn't be the place it is if they didn't serve. And I think we can all look at that and say, you know, we're able to put our mark on the city. So I'm ready to engage more in the community. I'm ready to continue to serve and really ultimately give my opportunity to, to give back. Urbendale has given me so much and our family so much. I like to bring my perspective to the business of the city and be a part of that process and continue to make Urbendale a city where residents, businesses and families seek out, seek out as a community of preference where they want to live because of the great amenities that our city offers.
What can you bring to the city council that will benefit our community?
Yeah. Well, thank you, Bob. You know, I, it's, it really starts with a genuine interest in being a part of the community and a genuine interest and love for our city. I've put a lot of thought into this decision, the amount of commitment that it takes. I've witnessed a lot of people serve on city council and I recognize what a commitment it is. It's not something I've taken lightly and I've put a lot of time and thought into it. And I think now is a good time to get involved and take that next step. And I wouldn't get involved if I didn't think that I could serve in this limited capacity or this interim capacity and leave Urbendale better than I found it and leave the, the council and the business of the city better than I found it. Couple of specific ways, you know, I'm a problem solver. Getting to serve on the Economic Development Board, you, I got to witness the attraction retention efforts by the city. And serving on Endow Urbendale, I got to see more of the city, you know, more of the nonprofit community and that side of our city. And it's been great to watch how both organizations tackle problems, ultimately in an effort to reach a, a positive outcome. A lot of what we do is not controversial, but it takes people coming together and figuring out the right decision and the best way forward and the, and the best way to get through that. So it's been fun to get to watch that. And I think I've really developed a lot of problem solving skills through that that I could bring and being collaborative. The other piece of it is the relationship. Just through my business in Urbendale and through being a part of the community, I've gotten to connect with a lot of people that span both the public and private sectors and across different levels of government. And, you know, one of the things that's always made me really proud of Urbendale is, is what we do to share services and collaborate across the metro. And those relationships would help leverage that and being able to try and, and continue to do that. And where we can, share and collaborate with other communities. And the last thing would just, I'm a customer of city services. And I think a lot of times you learn a lot about how your business or your organization operates by being a customer of that organization. You know, I've relied on the police and the fire and the EMT department. In fact, I was out running last year and I, I got hit by a car. I made a complete recovery, a very little image, but I got to deal with the police and, and my brother was an EMT. So I got a little more familiar with those services. I'm an avid runner. I use our trails. In fact, I, I run, I, I run by a lot of folks' houses on a regular basis, give them a shout that are on here today. And, you know, through my work at R and R Realty Group, we've gotten to take projects through the development and the permitting process. So I've gotten to see so many different aspects of how the city operates. And I think you can continue to look at that for opportunities for constant improvement, constant innovation. I think you just learn a lot from being a customer of city services. So, you know, bringing that problem solving approach, bringing those relationships from around the community and just being a customer and understanding what that process is like. I think I could bring that ultimately to try and find positive outcomes for the, the residents of the city of Urbendale that it could be dealing with different problems or some of the same problems that we deal, deal with.
All right. And then lastly, is there anything else you'd like to add or ask the council?
I know. I think I'll just defer my time if there's other folks that have questions. I, I consider it an honor to be even considered for this. And there's so many good people on this call today. It's just an honor to be a part of that group and have learned a lot from a lot of the folks on here today.
All right. All right. Thanks, Adam. All right. Now I, we have some time left. So I'll recognize council members for questions. If you just raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Matt, let's start with your question.
As I said, I will ask about every time. So you mentioned some kind of broad goals, some economic relationship. But are there any specific projects that you want to try to tackle over the next nine months to a year that you want to see? Like what is the one thing that you would really, really hope to get done in this next year?
Sure. Well, Matt, thanks for the question and beyond your service to Urbendale. Thanks for your service to our country and wish you all the best while you're serving abroad. You know, one of the things that I've been really encouraged by that we've made progress on is, you know, some of the incentives and revitalization efforts that are taking place in our downtown Urbendale. I look at two different opportunities there, the residential front. We've got a great housing stock there. And with the addition of some diverse housing options in there and workforce housing, you know, with the addition of the apartment project that's going in, I think we have a real opportunity to put some incentives in place to open up some opportunities for some single-family house updates in that area. We've got a great housing stock, but you know, it may need to, some of those houses may need a new bathroom, may need a garage, may just need some updates to bring them into what young residents or young families or workforce housing residents may want in today's housing. I think we've got an opportunity to really revitalize parts of eastern Urbendale where we can offer more affordable housing options in great housing stock and single-family residences in addition to some of the multifamily options. So I'd really like to see that. And I think that pairs really well with bringing a revitalization of the businesses in downtown Urbendale. If you can get more residents in that area, younger families and, and bookend that with what's going on at Merle Hay Mall, I think you stand to really revitalize that area. When we do, when we talk to retailers, they're, they're always interested in population and momentum. And, you know, if we can get our population growing in that, in that area a little bit with the momentum we've got at Merle Hay Mall, I really think our downtown is just primed really well for revitalization. So Matt, I don't know that we'll get it totally done while you're away. I'd love to welcome you back to Urbendale and, and show you all the progress. But I think ultimately, if we can keep that ball rolling, these are, these are efforts that take multiple years. But if we can put the foundation in place, I think you're going to come back and see some really good things underway. That, that's certainly a, I, I live on 84th Street. So that's an area close to my heart. And I'd love to see if we could get that moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions from the council? Bridget?
Given your work with R and R and the vast amount of property that they own in Urbendale, do you feel like you have a lot of conflicts of interest when it comes to development projects that are coming down the pike?
It's a good question and I appreciate you bringing it up. I would, I, to be honest, if it wasn't, if there was an issue, an R and R project that came up, I would follow the precedent that previous council members have followed. Anytime their businesses have projects up in front of the council and gladly abstain. I don't anticipate a lot of conflicts. Typically, by the time our projects get to the city council, there's, there's good staff support. There's good council support. They're, they're usually approved somewhat unanimously. So, but certainly if there was a conflict or even just a perceived conflict from other members or city staff, gladly work through those things and abstain if necessary. And certainly if it was a, a conflict with R and R project, gladly abstain on those. But I, I don't see a ton of conflicts on the horizon, but I would take that very, very seriously. I, I wouldn't want anybody to think that there's impropriety in any of that process.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Well, Adam, you have three minutes left, two minutes left. Do you have any last comments you'd like to add during your time?
Well, I'll just close by thanking the council, thanking the city staff. It's been a great process. I really appreciate the opportunity. I really appreciate the opportunity over the last couple of years to get to know everybody on council. Just through different involvement in Urbendale. I think I bring a unique set of skills. It would be an honor to, to try and fill Matt's shoes for, for about a year. But more than anything, just appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this. I wish everybody, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, enjoy the time, please be safe, be careful. We, we want to see you next Christmas to be able to be with your family too. So no, thank you for the time. I really do appreciate it and really appreciate your honest consideration.
All right. Thank you, Adam. All right. Well, we are right on schedule. We have a break slotted right now, so we will take a 10-minute break. And so I encourage you to take, take a step outside, maybe look at Jupiter and Saturn while you can. It's supposed to be a pretty good time right now. And we will reconvene with Bridget Nixon at 6:25. All right. Start here in a minute. Welcome, Bridget. We'll just confirm we have everybody here and then we'll get started with your interview.
Oh, that's fine.
Adam and Dave, are you both back?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Well, I show 6:25, so we will reconvene, Bridget. So welcome, Bridget Nixon, to the interview for tonight, and we'll get started with you. If you could please give us a brief overview of your involvement in the community.
Sure. Well, I am a bit new to the Urbandale community. My husband and I purchased our home here in October 2019. And so as you well know, we didn't have a lot of time to set down roots until the pandemic changed life pretty dramatically. But I have lived in the Des Moines area for about 10 years. And so some of the organizations that I volunteered and been involved with have been the Blake Park Zoo, the Science Center. I was for a year, I was the point person for the Young Survival Coalition, which is a nonprofit for women under 40 who have been diagnosed with breast cancer. And I'm also a member of the Soil and Water Conservation Society. So a lot of these things, while they're not necessarily located in Urbandale, do provide services that the residents of Urbandale can use and enjoy. So I'm looking forward to reengaging a little bit more with our community once the pandemic starts to get things or once we're getting back to the new normal, as they say. I'm also finishing a PhD program that has taken a lot of my time and energy, obviously. So this would be a real privilege to find an opportunity like this where I can serve my community and reinvest this time and energy that I'll have into keeping Urbandale to be a great community. Other than that, you know, as we've lived here for a little over a year, we previously lived in the Drake neighborhood. Now we live in Urbandale. We've just been enjoying the reasons we moved here in the first place, an affordable, comfortable home in a safe, walkable neighborhood and some of the parks and businesses, making sure that we are supporting those local businesses over the year. So that's been, that's been the majority of my community involvement in this past year.
Okay. Why are you interested in serving on city council?
I think that our overall conversation is kind of dominated by national politics. But where the real change can happen and the make or break of communities, I think, happens at the local level. That's where you really impact people's quality of life and where you can do the most good. I've been able two times previously in my life to work for city government. I worked for the Parks and Rec Department in the city of Davenport, where I got experience making me appreciate those the city employees who do a lot of maintenance and landscaping, which were some of my duties as well as zookeeping at that point. And also working for the city of Clinton for the public library. So this has given me a lot of appreciation for how our city employees keep things going. But I've also been able to just gain a little bit of a bird's eye view into the amount of influence that the people who are on commissions and on city council can have and how we can improve that community. Whether it was watching my my nearest and dearest kind of had that experience working with the police departments or human resources as my aunt and uncle did when I lived with them in the city of Davenport. It just showed me a great appreciation for the people who keep our communities going. So I would, I'd like to get more experience in doing that. You know, this is where we decide, are we going to keep our libraries well staffed? Because we're going to make sure that our librarians have the same minimum wage as other city employees. Are we going to make sure that we're addressing our residents' concerns about not having fast enough internet by pairing up with Metronet and making sure we're getting fiber in? You know, this is where we're going to keep Urbandale one of the best places to live, according to Money Magazine anyway. And I think that the city council is is where that gets done. And so that's why I'm interested in serving. But also, I mean, this is a temporary position and you're doing a lot of great work here, and I just want to keep the wheel rolling on that. It's stepping into a temporary position, things that looking at some of the stuff you've done over the past year, like the unbiased police ordinance, I think was was wonderful, moving ahead with food truck permits on the Beaver Creek Stream Bag stabilization, like I mentioned, the Metronet Fiber Project, all of those things. You know, you've got the ball rolling. Those are all things that are going to improve the community and stepping into a temporary position. I think that my aim would just to be keeping that good work going.
All right. Thank you. And then what can you bring to the city council that will benefit the community?
I'd like to go from kind of broad to specific on this one. The broad sense is I know I'm coming in with a slightly different set of skills, having a background as a scientist, especially dealing with, I deal with wildlife, wildlife ecology. But there's a lot of foundational skills that come with being a scientist that I think would be really applicable in this role. We have to do a lot of joint projects where you have people coming in with different priorities, different ways of how they want to spend money, different outcomes they want to see, and trying to compromise on an outcome that's going to be beneficial for the most people. Sorry, I am referencing my notes. Taking a look at all these different stakeholders in a project and trying to come to solutions that are the most objective, that are the most financially sound and have the greatest benefit to a community, as well as making sure that budgets are balanced, is part of a scientist's life also, as different. You know, I've worked on projects, summer of 18, if you remember how much rain we got. A lot of those funds had to be repositioned to deal with just the crazy weather, as well as managing money from nonprofit, from state buckets, from federal buckets. So I think those broader skills would be beneficial in this role. And also, you know, during my time when I was an employee with Davenport Parks and Rec, I also came across some really hard, really unpopular decisions where they decided to actually close the zoo where I was working because it was not beneficial for the city finances. And there was a lot of parallels to some of the debates you saw over the Urbandale pool this year. So I, you know, recognize like sometimes it's hard to make decisions that can be really unpopular with a lot of people. I also think that there's some things that come up that aren't more in my wheelhouse. Things like when you have to approve a special bow hunting season for urban bow hunting or the the issue that came up recently with urban farming and moving ahead with beekeeping. You know, I think those are areas where I can provide some some additional insight with my background. To be really specific, I was looking at, you know, some of the strategic priorities and things like stormwater waste management policy or stormwater management policy. I was thinking, looking at the stormwater utility fee, that it would potentially be beneficial if we could have that homeowner cost share system better matching some of our neighboring communities and using that fee with partnerships like the Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership. We could really improve the commitment to low impact development, sustainable stormwater management with homeowners, with businesses, with the whole community in general. And then focusing on projects that are sponsored by the State Revolving Fund because that is so city friendly with having low interest rates on loans. I also, I really like what you guys are doing, the focus that you have on creek bank erosion and restorations, and of course, keeping fully partnered with like the Walnut Creek WMA and Beaver Creek WMA and Active with Airboards is important, as well as employing the, I'm not sure how well this is employed so far, but the DNR River Restoration Toolbox being a great tool to use in particular with that. But we can't forget those smaller tributaries too. And I was thinking specifically of Brocklin Creek. You know, Brocklin Creek is one of those smaller areas where you can get a lot of interface, especially with kids in the community and teach them about waterways. But it's got a necolite problem. And so that doesn't make it really safe for a lot of our community members to use. And then it also impairs some of our larger waterways. I mean, that's one of the reasons why Walnut Creek is impaired. And looking at our public pond resources like those in Walker Johnson and Lakeview and Laura Ward Parks. I mean, those are great community resources and they help with stormwater runoff. And we can also look for assistance from like the Community Fishing Program and things like Clive and Johnson and Ankeny have done. So like I said, I wanted to go from kind of broad to a lot more specific, but in particular, I think those are things that I could offer, serving with you for a year on city council.
All right. And then lastly, is there anything else you'd like to add or you'd like to ask the council?
Um, sure, there is a question I had. So I guess one of the things I was wondering is if I was chosen for this position, like Mr. Blake, would I be sort of working with you to come to decisions on things? Or are you stepping back fully from the position while you're gone?
It's a much broader question that I don't know if we've crossed the, I mean, it's up to you. I don't know how I will be able to interact, whether I'll have the time. There is still up in the air where I'm going to even be located in the Middle East. So if if there is, if you, I'm always available. If you want to send an email, if you want my opinion, I'm always happy to share. But in some ways, I can't control your vote. This would be you having my, taking my seat. So you would have the voting power. So happy to give guidance on what I think, but I don't know other than that, whether we could, I would have the ability to have a close relationship or not.
Okay. Yeah, that's where I was.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think the bottom line is that you would not be merely serving as a proxy for Matt, but certainly filling in as a full council member and and would have that power and authority.
Okay. And why I was wondering is just, you know, since since Mr. Blake, you were appointed by the residents, I think keeping your opinion in mind, if not, you know, you're saying you're not going, not a proxy, but keeping your opinion in mind, considering you were elected, I think would be important. So that's why I asked that question. Thank you. I was also wondering, you know, as we're coming out of this really unique year, we're seeing, we're going to be seeing a lot of people who are coming out of it with mental health issues and with addiction issues. And one of the things I was wondering is if we as a city are doing anything to prepare for the potential challenges that could come with that role could potentially be in that.
You broke up a little bit, Bridget. Can you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, absolutely.
Why don't you, why don't you just rephrase the last part of it again, so we can make sure we all have it?
Yeah. What role can the Urbandale City, the city of Urbandale play in 2021, dealing with the potential addiction and mental health issues that are coming out of this past year? Because we're seeing those issues already start to grow.
Is there one particular council member who want to offer their opinion?
Well, in the absence of anyone else, I'll speak this is Ron. You know, Urbandale is rather unique in that we don't have an infrastructure to provide those other than through the police department and which is one of the things we're looking at is whether or not we should expand services and offer more of that. I agree. I think we're going to have increased addiction and things, but I, you know, Urbandale right now, just, you know, we aren't in a position to do that. The question, of course, is, should we be and like everybody say yes, and then the next question is how?
Yeah. Okay. And again, I was asking that because I had looked for some of this information and couldn't necessarily find, I guess, an answer. So I was wondering if you had any thoughts while I had you, while I had your attention.
And to follow up on Ron's point, we are, we are kind of at the cusp, we're not at a 50,000 population yet, so we don't have the direct human services role that cities over 50,000 do, but we do provide substantial support to our food pantries and to the No Community Action Network Social Service. And, you know, and we also work very closely with Polk County, who's tasked with providing mental health services in this region as well, so.
Right. I saw the $300,000 budget increase and some of that going to the Urbandale Food Bank. And I was, you know, really happy to see that because our community, yeah, needed it. And you guys were in there putting in the good work for the people who need it. I'm getting to the end of my time here, and you said, if there's anything else that I wanted to add. I guess one thing I wanted to add is that, you know, in five years, when I think about the city of Urbandale, the first thing I think about is that I'm still going to live here. And I was a little sad to see that on the National Community Survey that there were a lot of people who that response went down and they weren't expecting to live here in five years. And as a young professional woman, my guess, you know, why is that? I would like to know more about our community retention and how to make sure that people are staying here and how to make sure that we've got housing available to to older adults and seniors who might need it, affordable if they're on a fixed income. And look at, you know, just keeping our community intact. And I also noticed on this survey that a lot of people responded that they feel disengaged from the community. And after, after this year, I mean, you can figure why, right? So I'd like to wonder, or I'd like to figure out ways that we can gain ground in that over the next few years of keeping people engaged and working on things that they responded. There's a decline in like arts and culture opportunities, which again, given the year, is understandable why that would have happened. But I think that's one of the places where we can gain some ground in forming a strong community, and I hope that that happens. And that was kind of my final thought, so.
All right. Well, we are right at the end of your 15 minutes. All right. Well, we are right at the end of your 15 minutes. So thank you, Bridget. We appreciate, uh, your, your application and your interest in this. And then we're going to move on, but thank you very much.
Thank you and have a safe tour, Mr. Blake.
Thank you. All right. Uh, we are at six forty and I will move to Amy Ostrander Kroll. Amy, I saw your name on here. Are you available? Ready? Are you ready to go?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yes.
Fantastic.
All right. Well, welcome. And, uh, we'll start off with the first question for you. And that is to please give us a brief overview of your involvement in the community.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, first of all, thanks to the mayor and the members of the council for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Uh, my name is Amy Kroll and I have been a resident of Urbandale for the past 20 years. Uh, I am currently raising two kids. I have a senior and a sophomore in high school, uh, both of course at Urbandale High School. Uh, during the time that we've lived in Urbandale, I have professionally worked for criminal and juvenile justice planning and have also started and ran a local nonprofit that really believes in the voice of each youth and the value of youth development champions who bring that voice to light across our state. In both my personal and my professional capacities, I have had the opportunity to serve the Urbandale community, including its youth and its residents, and I've taken leadership roles across multiple civic groups. Uh, those civic groups expand beyond Urbandale proper. My involvement first started after meeting, um, the one and only Bruce Bernard, uh, which I'm certain all of you know. Um, he recruited me to serve for an extended tenure on the Human Services Committee of Ucan. Uh, shortly after meeting Bruce, uh, my own kid started school at Urbandale and I actually found myself working closely with Adventure Time staff. Um, over the, over about those six or so years that I was involved with Adventure Time, I had the opportunity to work with them on a variety of HR issues, um, grant writing, support and staff training, um, because it really aligned with my professional background of social work as well, um, and also macro level work. So from serving, there, there's a variety of different ways in which I've been involved in Urbandale, um, stemming from being a Girl Scout leader. I've been a rec soccer coach for multiple years. I've hosted four international students, uh, who all attended Urbandale High School. I've served on the Urbandale School Advisory Council for the bond referendum. I have brokered STEM and girls programming at Jensen Elementary and the Urbandale Middle School. Um, we have helped design the Move In On Up and the Jayhawk On The Way program. And, um, I've also served on the CIP for the city and the resulting Parks and Rec Ad Hoc Committee. So over the past 20 years, I've been fairly active in the Urbandale community.
Okay. I'm sorry. I, my speaker just temporarily gave out, so I apologize. So, um, if we can move on to why are you interested in serving on the city council?
Sure. So first and foremost, I applied for this position because I felt like a voice that's in alignment with Councilman Blake's is at, at the key fundamental component, key to the democratic process. And so I knew that I would keep the issues top of mind that the voters elected him to represent. Secondly, I care about this community and the people in it. The foundation to our strong economic system really comes and stems from the people and the connections that are made within a community. Urbandale is very strong. We know this. It has a solid foundation, but it also has some big challenges ahead of it. From the movement of the Bucks Arena to my neighborhood, um, to the, the pool and the issues that we know face the Urbandale community as it relates to the pool and recreation and the ongoing and compounding social economic factors, um, caused not only by recent issues, but COVID, um, you know, we need to understand and, and I appreciate the levels of complexity in the community that's continuing to expand and its diversity. I also have proven skill sets to tackle complex issues and I'm really excited for the opportunity to use those skills to serve in this role.
Hey, well, that's a good segue to our next question. It's what can you bring to the city council that will benefit the community?
Yeah. Great question. So I thought long and hard about this. And one of the things that comes up, and when I think about, you know, on the flip side, what don't I bring? Um, it's pretty evident. I don't have the years of experience with city budgets. We know that this position's walking right into a city budget year and a city budget meeting, the very first meeting. Um, but while I don't have experience in city budgets, I'm really quite versed in managing large government projects, um, large government and building a nonprofit. I've ran two successful capital campaigns from the ground up and that takes a little bit of understanding how complex budgets and relationships work. I understand grants and grant restrictions likely better than any of your other candidates. So when we're looking at what's next for Urbandale, those are the skill sets that can really assist city staff. As an individual who's grown up in a family of small business owners, I've spent my entire life surrounded by the conversations related to the intricacies of how business and city infrastructure interconnect. Um, those conversations are, are day in, day out, and they are intricate to the balance of that has to be maintained between, you know, your competing interests in order to commit, continue to move the community forward. Um, my social work background is pretty immense. Uh, I bring over 25 years of working with diverse populations and coaching staff. Um, it's a rare day when I'm sitting in a room with other social workers. I am typically surrounded by, by folks like yourself, um, in city council meetings, in ad hoc committee meetings and city meetings in general, um, as well as other government type meetings, economic development meetings, you name it. Um, and the other piece of that is not, my, my neighborhood here in Urbandale is probably one of the diverse, most diverse neighborhoods in Urbandale. Um, there's not, you know, there's not a day that goes by when I don't interact with people who are much different than myself. And so I also recognize and I appreciate Bridget's call out to the mental health and social factors, um, that need to be addressed. You know, I built a nonprofit from the ground up. That nonprofit is very stable at this point. And part of the reason is looking at the community as a whole and what are the needs? And how do we build and work within the resources that we have to address those needs and, and to mitigate, um, some of the factors that are at play? Um, I've developed lasting programs that are based on the needs of the community members. Um, we mentioned Bravo or, or Hotel Motel Tax, I guess. Um, I've worked with Bravo to help shape their strategic plan to encompass the views of young people. I've worked with the Urbandale Schools, Ucan, Polk County Board of Supervisors, all of those pieces to help ensure that our most vulnerable here in Urbandale are supported. And at the end of the day, I, you know, I think about it, um, we're blessed here. We truly, truly are to have a strong community. We are rich in experience. We are rich in resources. And really the key for us is to harness, harness that energy for progress. Um, when I think about what I bring, I bring 25 years of experience in social work and government experience. I understand what's needed to succeed and, and run a successful business. And I have a passion for the young people and the families in this community that honestly is rarely seen. Um, yeah, I also have a strong familiarity with how to work WebEx.
Well, that's good. You can, Nicole, uh, is the top. She's, she's the chief. She knows how to do it best. But it's good that you know how to. All right. Uh, and then lastly, Amy, is there anything else you'd like to add or you'd like to ask the city council?
I think most of the questions I already had have been answered already. And I appreciate the, the detailed questions from some previous folks and, and the answers to those. Um, yeah. So I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you. We have a few, we have about six minutes left. So Matt, I'll let you ask your first question.
Well, I think she's kind of hit on it, but I'll still, I'll still, I'll re-ask it nonetheless because I've been doing it to everybody for fairness. Amy, uh, again, in your nine to 10 months, if, what is the like one project that you would really, really want to see done in that timeframe with your chance as a city council person?
Sure. So I mean, first and foremost, I don't think it's realistic that any of the big projects are going to be done in nine to 10 months. So I don't think you're off the hook. Um, but what I would like to see happen, I think we have some real opportunity. Like I said, I live in the Merle Hay Mall area. I live on 64th Street, right by Jensen Elementary. There are a lot of changes coming down the pike that are related to this particular area. I'm very well connected to this neighborhood. And for me in nine to 10 months, I would like to engage this neighborhood in what happens with the redevelopment. I recognize some of that's already set. The wheels are in motion. I get that. Um, but there are always areas where we can better engage our communities and our neighborhoods in, um, really designing and developing their own neighborhood and hearing what they want to say or what they would like to see. The other component that I really think is important, um, you know, I work with young people and I'm always intrigued and amazed at the ideas that they have. And I just think if we can lift our youth's voice up to hear what they want in our Parks and Rec areas, I know this is a conversation I've had with Jan and, um, but I think about the pool. I think about community center. I think about like, what does that really mean? What does it need to look like? You know, we're making plans for things that are, um, you know, they're going to be here for the long haul. And so let's make sure we get as much input and as much forethought involved upfront. So we're not making decisions that we'll regret down the road. Um, and then the other piece, I'm a social worker, you know, by and large, like at the end of the day, I'm still interested in the experiences of all people. And, you know, how do we design programs, um, to actually Bridget's points? How do we, how do we design programs that are based on our community needs, um, on our assessment data? Um, you know, taking in, in consideration the capacity that we have as a community, who are our partners that are, are in play within the metro? Um, you know, we have some phenomenal providers. And so how do we develop a system that utilizes and capitalizes off the resources we have while keeping in mind our specific needs of Urbandale? So those are the things that, um, the three top things that come to mind when I think about what can be accomplished in a nine to 10 month timeframe.
All right. Thanks, Amy. We have a few minutes left. Any last questions from the council? Adam, I see you shaking your head. Bridget, Ron, David? All right. Well, thank you very much, Amy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
All right. I show six fifty three and I saw Pat on here. Pat, are you ready to go?
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
Well, welcome, Pat Henham. Uh, we will, we will start with your interview now. If you're ready to go.
Sure.
Uh, first, if you could just give us a brief overview of your involvement.
Okay. Well, first I want to thank you for, uh, Mr. Mayor for giving me the opportunity and, and counsel. Um, I haven't sat through all the interviews tonight, but I did, I've been in and out periodically and, and, uh, the one thing that I've noticed is that you have a incredible list of potential candidates. Based on what I've seen, it doesn't look like you can go wrong on any choice. So, uh, and that's, that's the wonderful thing about Urbandale is, is, uh, you know, you have so many people that I think good quality people that want to give back to our, to our community. And I, I moved into this community in 1992. And, uh, I think, you know, I, uh, one of the things I talked about when I ran for city council, uh, was that what attracted me to Urbandale was that Urbandale is truly a unique, unique community. And, um, it, it just has such a small town feel in a, in a big city environment. But, uh, um, but that was my desire to, why I wanted to get into Urbandale. Uh, as far as what I've participated in and been involved in, I served on the UGRA Board for a number of years. I was, uh, quite involved there, probably eight or 10 years. Was a director of the basketball program and, and helped with a softball facility and, and so forth. Um, also got quite involved in the, uh, Urbandale, uh, Chamber of Commerce back in 2007. We relocated our office. I've lived in Urbandale since 1992. However, I, my office was, uh, down in South Des Moines. And then in 2007, we moved our office up here to Urbandale. Um, and I joined the, the Urbandale City Council, or excuse me, the Urbandale, Chamber of Commerce at that time. Uh, got quite involved, uh, was asked to be on the, the board at the, uh, at the chamber and then, uh, served on the board for a couple of years. And then what, and then was asked to be on the executive board, which then put me in position to, uh, be the vice chair. Uh, last year in 2019, I was the chair of the, of the Urbandale, uh, Chamber of Commerce. So, uh, was, was a wonderful opportunity there. I've also served on the, uh, Leadership Program years ago. I'm, I was graduate at the, uh, Urbandale Leadership Program. Um, other things that I've done, I've, I threw the Urbandale, uh, Chamber. It, I was quite involved down at the Des Moines Partnership as well, which, uh, allowed me the affiliate, uh, group down there. And I was on their executive committee on affiliate group. Uh, that really provided some opportunities for me to see some things outside of Urbandale, um, and, and to, uh, get involved with, uh, with some things out, outside. So, um, that's, as far as my involvement, that's, um, and I, and I also, uh, work at a business here in Urbandale. I've been, uh, an employee of MMIT Business Solutions Group. Um, we built a new building out here in, uh, 2000 and, uh, been, uh, part of this company for 35 years.
All right. Thank that. Number two, why are you interested in serving on this?
Well, I just, you know, and, and when I was running for city council, you know, just like I had stated there, I, I just really want to give back. Urbandale has been just an incredible community to be a part of. And, um, as I just said earlier, it, it just has, it's so unique. And I just want to see that Urbandale continues to be the uniquely Urbandale that we branded ourselves as. Um, and I have, in addition to that, I have two daughters that have chosen to come back to Urbandale. Uh, one of them, uh, is an attorney here in, in Urbandale with a law firm here in Urbandale. My other daughter, uh, works right here at MMIT with me. Uh, they have chosen to come back to Urbandale and, and I want to continue to serve Urbandale, um, to, to continue to be the great place that, that I raised a family and, and, uh, in hopes that, um, that they can raise families and, and, you know, have the same thing that I did growing up or raising them here.
All right. Now, number three, what can you bring to the city council that will benefit the community?
Well, um, I knocked on probably 1,500 doors, uh, running for city council and talked to a lot of folks in Urbandale. And, and I felt like I, I've got a, a fairly good understanding of, of what's important to people in Urbandale. Um, the one thing that I did find as I was knocking on doors is that Urbandale, there's not a lot of complaints out there. And, um, Urbandale has, has our, our city leaders, uh, over the years have done a fantastic job, um, in, in Urbandale. And, um, but I, I felt like I kind of got the pulse of, of the, uh, of the community as I, as I knocked on those doors. I, I wore off a, a lot of shoe leather doing that. Um, the other thing that I, that I did during that, uh, during that run for city council is I met with each city director and, uh, took a little bit of time, but I thought it was important to do that and, uh, had the opportunity to, to talk with them and, and find out, you know, if they had challenges, uh, within their department, what was important, um, uh, things that were concerning to them. And, um, so I felt like I really, uh, created a, a good understanding of each department as well as, uh, created some, some pretty good relationships with some of those department directors. So, um, but really just want to give back to, to, uh, to Urbandale. Uh, like I said, it's, it's been so good to me. Uh, you know, and I really would like to just step in and, and help where I can. Uh, Matt is a, a fan, you know, fantastic addition to the council and, and, uh, and Matt, thanks for, for serving our country. I really, you know, really proud of you for doing that. And, and I just want to step in and help, uh, just step in and, and help Matt in, in his absence and, um, and just be a part of, uh, of helping continue to move things forward.
All right. And then lastly, is there anything else you want to add or you'd like to ask the council?
Um, not really. I mean, just, I just want to thank you for the. Um, not really, I mean, just, I, I just want to thank you for the opportunity. Um, I, you've done a fantastic job, uh, you know, leading this, this community. And um, I think I saw Adam uh, touch on it, or somebody touched on it earlier, I can't remember, but just a, a love for the city, I just have a, a heartfelt love for, for the city of Urbandale and, and just uh, want to thank, you know, the leadership for everything you've done to make such a, such a great community and, and uh, um, don't really have any questions, but just wanted to uh, to make that comment.
All right, well, thanks Pat. And we have some time left, so I will turn it back to the council for any questions the council may have. I see Matt's unmuted, so I will recognize Matt for.
So, yes, uh, again, you may have heard and I asked the same question. Over the next nine, 10, nine to 10 months, is there a specific program or project goal that you have that you would like to see implemented over this next 10 to 10 months to me?
Well, one of my goals, uh, Matt, was, when, when I was running was, and, and I've heard a couple of other people touch on it, uh, when I was jumping in and out here tonight on the revitalization of downtown Urbandale and I, that, that was near and dear to my heart. Um, and I, I think the potential is just incredible for that area. You know, and now what I'm seeing move, you know, with, with the Buccaneers and, and, and their relocation and, and some things going on down in that area, you can see it kind of starting and, and if there was a way that I could get involved to help continue to move that forward. You know, I, I would, I would love to do that. I, I did, when I was uh, um, running, I did spend some time in that area, talking to a lot of those business owners and, and there's, boy, there's a desire to, to really bring that back to life, bring it to life and, and, you know, I just really envisioned that just being a, an incredible opportunity for us to um, to uh, build a, a, a wonderful area there for young people to, to go and, and you know, we have the housing now that's starting in that area. And I, and I just have a real desire to uh, to continue to see that area improved, so. Uh, if there was an opportunity, uh, Matt, to continue, you know, to help move any initiatives forward there, that's where I would, I would like to step in and help.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? Not seeing any. So Pat, you have just a little bit of time left, any, any closing comments?
No, just, just thanks again and, and um, and appreciate the, the opportunity and, and um, I can just say that I would work uh, in, in Matt's absence, that I would, I would step in and, and work hard for him. I probably would try to communicate with Matt either uh, before he leaves or, or during uh, during the tenure, if I was elected, I would probably try to uh, reach him to bounce ideas off him and, and get his thoughts on issues. Uh, but uh, yeah, I just, I just want to thank you for the uh, for the opportunity and, and if elected, I can tell you that I would uh, I would work extremely hard for you. Uh, you know, the one, the one thing that, that I, I've spent, you know, many, many years working in the Urbandale community from a business standpoint and really feel like I have a good understanding of, of uh, a lot of the business folks in the community and, and uh, so that, that's an area that maybe I could offer uh, some, a lot of additional thoughts and ideas and, and uh, I really try to stay plugged in with uh, with what's going on there uh, as well, so. Um, that's probably the last comment I'd like to make.
All right, well, uh, thank you, Pat, and uh, we, we really appreciate your, your step up and, and applying tonight, so thank you for your time today. Appreciate it.
You.
All right, we are running just a little bit ahead of schedule, we are scheduled for a break next, I see it's 7:04. Uh, Mary, I see you're online, if we took a 10 minute break, uh, we'll be back at 7:15, does that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay. All right, we will reconvene, uh, it's over to.
Nicole?
Yes.
Having some issues, I keep um, like audio signal.
I see you logged in.
Twice.
You're cut, you're cutting out a little bit there, I see you logged in two times. Are you logged in on like a phone and then on a computer?
I'm on my laptop, but like, when Amy was on, I logged on to my and I think I'm just going to go ahead and log out of the um, top and use the tablet.
Sure, is that what you're speaking on now?
Uh, hold on a second. Okay, I'm on the tablet now, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
All right, I'm going to log out of the I'm getting feedback.
Oh, perfect, yep, log out of the other one, that sounds good.
All right, how's that?
Perfect.
The only problem with this is that I can't see everybody else.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well. Oh, and you probably can only see part of my face.
Right now, I don't see your video on.
Oh, all right, let me try this.
Yeah.
How's that?
Perfect, now I can see you.
It's too low. That's too, okay. All right, I'm just going to have to hold the puppy.
Yeah, sometimes it's not a terrible problem to not have a camera in my office here, so.
No, I get it, that's, one of the things that I was going to have you show me someday is how you put your picture up there.
Hmm, sure.
I look better in my photo.
All right, well, I show 7:15 now. Uh, just to confirm, Mike, since I can't see the three of you, Adam? There's Bridgette, I see Bridgette, there's Adam, David, we have you back as well? Yep, all right.
I'm back.
All right, we have everyone again, we have Mary here, so we will reconvene the meeting and Mary, welcome uh, to the interview process tonight, Mary Pulsom. We will start with your interview, we have 15 minutes from 7:15, so. I'll start with the first question, if you could please give us a brief overview of your involvement in the community.
Okay, um, before I start, I wanted to let you know that I started the meeting tonight on my laptop and I was experiencing some serious issues with losing audio, losing video, so I just switched over to my tablet. Um, which is kind of limited, but it should work for tonight. Anyway, um, I have lived in Urbandale for just over 30 years. Um, I started my community involvement in 2000, in 1995 when EJ Jovanetti appointed me to the Parks and Rec Commission. Uh, in 2000, I was appointed by Mayor Zhang to serve on the PNZ Commission. And then in 2003, I successfully ran for a seat on the city council and I retained that seat until the end of 2011. Um, and I retired from the council because I took on the full-time position as the program coordinator, also known as the director of UCAN. Um, while I was on the council, I represented the city on Bravo and on MAC, the Metropolitan Advisory Council. Um, I also served on the CIP Committee, serving as its chair for two years. Um, I retired from UCAN in 2017 after uh, following a successful wrap-up of the Urbandale Centennial. Uh, since that time, I have remained involved and committed to being a volunteer for UCAN, serving and assisting the residents of Urbandale. For example, since the pandemic started, I have been delivering meals to seniors three days a week. Um, that adds up to like over 900 meals that I've delivered since all that started. Um, I am a graduate of the First Leadership Urbandale class and I served on its planning committee for a number of years. I've served on the Fourth of July Committee back in the early 2000s. Um, I recently rejoined the Fourth of July Committee, I now serve as their liaison to the fireworks, which I think is very appropriate for me. Um, I'm also an Urbandale Lion, have been there since 2012. Um, I have served as John Forbes' campaign treasurer since he first ran for the State House in uh, 2012. Um, I have volunteered and knocked on doors for several city camp, city council candidates. Um, this past presidential election, I was a precinct chair for the caucus and then I was also precinct organizer for the get out to vote, so. That's my involvement.
All right. The second is, why are you interested in serving on the city council?
Well, yeah, first and foremost, um, is because Matt asked me uh, to serve. When this whole process started, uh, Matt and, and I think the mayor were under the impression that it would be an appointment followed by a council approval. Uh, Matt calls me, asks if I was interested. Um, I served as Matt's campaign manager, Matt and I share same, some of the same ideologies and I think if you look at the election results from November of 19 and, you know, how high Matt scored, I think it's important that the council continue with a person that shares Matt's ideologies. Um, but aside from that, I enjoyed the time I served on the council. Um, and even though this is, it's a very short time period, it's nine to 12 months, I definitely would look forward to another opportunity to serve our community.
Mary, if you want to.
All right.
What?
I, I think somebody was unmuted there, unfortunately, Mary, I think one of the call-in users, we, we've got it muted. Uh, third question is, what can you bring to the city council that will benefit the community?
Well, I think, um, first of all, since it, you know, I've been there, done that, I know staff, I know the processes. Um, and I think that makes my learning curve almost non-existent and I can be up and running like the same day I would be sworn into office. Um, but more importantly, I think that the time I served.
Okay, I am not hearing or seeing anybody, so. Mary, I'll turn it back to you for any last comments while you have time. You have six minutes in, on your time, so.
Six minutes. I actually, you'll find this surprising, Mary, but I really don't have anything else to add.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your interest. Thank you for your application and your time tonight.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right, we are at seven twenty-five, and Robert, I do not see you online yet. Are you here anywhere that I'm not seeing you?
And I would just also note, um, Robert, if you are on the line and you're on a call-in on a phone and the line's been muted from the program, if you push star six, that should unmute you from, from the program. I got it.
Okay, well, we got a little time, just a question for either Nicole or Bob. Um, so we have the link to the form and fill that out for each of the candidates. The paper copies that we have, do we need to hold on to those and return those back to Nicole or those for us?
I believe those are just for you, for your notes, aren't they, Nicole? You just need the Google Docs. Form, correct?
I would defer to your, how you'd like to handle that, but yes, they, I, I would think they could just be for your note purposes.
Yeah.
Well, so while you're all waiting, you can tell me what your plans are for Christmas.
Nothing. Staying home.
Put your feet up and have a fire.
Yep.
We just came back from Chicago where we had Christmas with two of our kids, so.
Nice.
Yeah, it was good.
Sorry about Notre Dame.
Well, we made it to the final four, although against Alabama, I'm not sure that's a, that's a blessing, but, uh, we'll take it. At least it's a chance.
Now, on my end, when it comes to Christmas, uh, we are, we are gonna get a little family together, but if I'm leaving, I, and they're gonna risk a little bit of the COVID restriction stuff because my mo- my mother would rather see my face before I leave, so. She's gonna finish.
Any further questions, Adam?
Uh, Mary, you kind of started out, one of the questions was saying that why, why you started this is because you were asked. If you weren't asked, do you think you would have stepped forward to apply?
Uh, yes, I still would have stepped forward because again, I think it's a very short time period, and so I think that the, uh, my experiences, my knowing the staff, knowing the processes, um, I think will be very beneficial. So, yes, I still would apply.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? Okay, I am not hearing or seeing anybody, so. Mary, I'll turn it back to you for any last comments while you have time. You have six minutes in, on your time, so.
Six minutes. I actually, you'll find this surprising, Mary, but I really don't have anything else to add.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your interest. Thank you for your application and your time tonight.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right, we are at seven twenty-five, and Robert, I do not see you online yet. Are you here anywhere that I'm not seeing you? I don't think Robert Vanderlin is online yet, so we did tell him, uh, seven thirty-five, so, um, we will, I'm not gonna we'll just kind of wait until he gets online here, and then we'll start as soon as he's available. Let's watch for him here.
And I would just also note, um, Robert, if you are on the line and you're on a call-in on a phone and the line's been muted from the program, if you push star six, that should unmute you from, from the program.
Okay, well, we got a little time, just a question for either Nicole or Bob. Um, so we have the link to the form and fill that out for each of the candidates. The paper copies that we have, do we need to hold on to those and return those back to Nicole or those for us?
I believe those are just for you, for your notes, aren't they, Nicole? You just need the Google Docs. Form, correct?
I would defer to your, how you'd like to handle that, but yes, they, I, I would think they could just be for your note purposes.
Yeah.
Well, so while you're all waiting, you can tell me what your plans are for Christmas.
Nothing. Staying home.
Put your feet up and have a fire.
Yep.
We just came back from Chicago where we had Christmas with two of our kids, so.
Nice.
Yeah, it was good.
Sorry about Notre Dame.
Well, we made it to the final four, although against Alabama, I'm not sure that's a, that's a blessing, but, uh, we'll take it. At least it's a chance.
Now, on my end, when it comes to Christmas, uh, we are, we are gonna get a little family together, but if I'm leaving, I, and they're gonna risk a little bit of the COVID restriction stuff because my mo- my mother would rather see my face before I leave, so.
There he is. Robert, welcome. We're running just a little early, so we've been kind of waiting for you. I don't want to uh, are you, are you ready to go? You're muted right now. You're muted right now, Robert. You need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, you guys waiting?
No, no, we were, we're running early, so you're, you're right on time. You're early anyway. We, we were running early, so we were just, uh, waiting for you. You weren't scheduled till seven thirty-five, so it's perfect. If you're ready to go now, we'll get started.
All I know is I think I need some awards behind me when I do this thing again. Like Mayor Bob, I, I think.
Those are, those are just maps. Those aren't any awards. Maps and a picture.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So, uh, you, you posed or Nicole sent four questions to that, and I'll, I'll get at those so you can go on with your night. First one was overview involvement with, uh, with Irvinville, I guess. And I, I guess moved, I grew up in Des Moines, Beavdale. And, uh, moved away after Iowa State. Uh, Dallas, Chicago, and then back home. And then I found, uh, Irvinville. I think it was, is, for me, it was very similar to Beavdale, kind of that home, uh, really neighborly community. Uh, since then, I, three kids, I guess we had our youngest one here in town. And as I got older, we did youth sports, so I helped coach youth sports and uh, soccer was the main one I coached all my kids in, and that was when, uh, Ron, our councilman Poga, has the, was under control of that and had it as one unit probably. Um, and then the other one, then went on to, uh, football and then, uh, baseball, I guess, with my youngest. Uh, for the ones that I got involved with, uh, I, I think, uh, at some points when you do voluntary stuff, you, you get encouraged to do it. My wife told me I had to, uh, be more involved with the kids' schools, so I was on the, uh, it went to St. Pi's, so I was on that school board, then the Dallas, and I was on, on that one too, so you kind of either sports or just community activities, you get involved with the kids and just, just see how they react to things, and so the involvement or I always feel it's, uh, you know, ninety percent showing up for most things for me. Uh, what else was it? You got, um, I was on the, the Irvinville Action Council, Council. When it first, uh, Irvinville Action Community Council, I think, when it first stormed up and we had Liz Hotsen do a five oh one C three, and then it, uh, Mary Paulson went on and, and changed it on to the Ucan, has a better catchy name to it. And then I was on this, uh, the Des Moines Leadership stuff. Oh, you guys are probably on the leadership with Irvinville or Iowa, and and I was on the, uh, Des Moines Leadership with, uh, Councilman Bridgette, Councilwoman Bridgette, thank you very much. And that was, uh, you're just kind of meeting and connect with people more so in those things, like you do with others. But, you know, the involvement has been just, uh, uh, show up, like I said earlier, just to show up and keep involved and, and for the kids and also just for the community. And then I did a few other nonprofit stuff, but that's mainly, mainly Irvinville, that's what I, that's what I did for. Why I'm interested in serving the city council is that, uh, when I grew up, my, my father was on the Des Moines City Council. And so, uh, you know, he always tried to instill his seven kids to, you know, make the world a better place in which you live. And I'm another, my other things, you know. Um, and that kind of stuck with me. So, uh, the volunteer through, throughout my time has been focused on that. And I thought this, uh, this thing with Irvinville City Councils, I, I love it because it's short-term. And it's also helping back to the community. So, uh, that's, I think, is an opportunity for me, and thank you for that. Um, I think that's it. I think it's really just trying to put back and give back to the community that's given me so much. So, I, I know with our kids, the growing up here, they've all been involved. The, uh, the youngest one was on that, uh, Little League World Series, the first one, and, uh, I think, um, Mayor Bob, uh, came and gave him the big pep talk back in the day. I don't, you probably don't remember it. They did at the time. I thought it was cool.
Oh, yeah.
You remember what she said? Probably not. That's okay. I'm sure it was good. I'm sure it was. And then what can I bring to, uh, city council? I guess, uh, for one, I think willingness to help, uh, like everybody else probably up, or at least looking to join the group. Willing to just help and just showing up, like we said earlier. And also too, I, I, my background is in engineering, so it gives a different perspective. I, I know at least a couple of you guys in attorneys on things, so that's a different perspective, but an engineer is also a different perspective too, so. A good or bad, but it is a different perspective that may help you guys out. And then, you know, uh, I'm, I'm rushing through this because I know this is the last one. The first or last is good, but last sometimes gets drawn out, so. Anything I'd like to add is, I, just again, I, I look forward and I appreciate the opportunity, just being able to serve, so if that comes out to be, it'd be great. And I don't know if you have any other questions for me?
I think there probably are some at least, but we'll give those, I think. Uh, Matt, do you want me to start with you?
Sure, uh, and thank you for, uh, joining us tonight. The, uh, what, the question I've asked every person, uh, so far as uh, what would be a specific goal for this nine months to twelve months that you'd be on council? Is there a specific project, a specific part of the community that you would, what is something that, uh, kind of a lasting legacy you would want over your timeframe in council? You know, uh, you know, I, I really don't look for legacy, and, uh, you know, I, I think, uh, everything that we've done with the youth sports. I think we've done good with community and keeping the tax rate in line and check. That's always kind of, uh, the Irvinville Council thing. You know, I, I look to the, uh, capital improvement projects, they seem pretty straightforward. There's nothing now that ordinary there. You know, I, I think the busing thing, uh, there's more coming out of that and affordable housing, I think, uh, that's what you kind of went through council and Bridgette, so. I, I think mainly it's just, uh, being a voice, being another voice on the city council. As far as anything that I believe for legacy, I, I, again, I don't look to that.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Any other quick, Bridgette? Bridgette, go ahead.
Unfortunately, I lost wifi during the middle part of your conversation, but fortunately, I have some history. I'm sure it was. Fortunately, I have some history with you, but could you ask a little more specifically about your, what kind of engineering, um, you do, um, and how that, uh, might, uh, be beneficial to us?
Well, uh, I started down in Dallas, uh, as a structural engineer, because my father was a structural engineer. And then, uh, it got to be where I was more typing in, uh, somebody else's rebar schedule, and, and I went into civil engineering more so, and also flood study. So I was doing a lot of flood studies in Dallas and then moved to Chicago where another family member was, and did more flood studies, and then did development work, civil development work. I think I may have worked with you, Mayor Bob, on something. I think I'm ready to be out. So it's more of the civil development work, and then I got, uh, I, somebody found me and said, hey, uh, you know, FEMA's going in, coming into town in two thousand, two thousand eight flooding. And so I worked for FEMA directly at the remote office here in West Des Moines for a couple of years. And then after that, I just, this is, I, I tell people, this is my wind-down job now. I'm a forensic engineer. It just sounds neat, forensic engineer, and all it is is an insurance adjuster with an engineer degree. So, uh, when I started it, this, sorry about this story. So I started it, it sounded really great, you know, because the selling point was you're gonna drive a man truck. I, I should have listed a little bit longer because I'm roughs half the time, so it took me a while to get, you know, this old man to get on a roof. But that's what I'm doing now, a forensic engineer. So the aspect of that is not only am I looking at, uh, disaster stuff, which would help if something happened like that, you know, duratio. Al- also too, the development work, I kind of know the nomenclature and just the problem solving involved with that. So hopefully that's, again, the other voice that you'd have on the council. Thank you.
So you're not doing your own show CSI Engineer, I think.
You know, it's not that neat. It really is, is really, you know, the roof stuff, I'm all, yeah, it's not that neat, yeah.
Any further questions? All right, well, uh, you have a few minutes left, Robert. You have any parting comments you'd like to make?
You know, I, I looked at the list of other candidates for this temporary spot, and you, you can't, I don't think you can go wrong. I really don't think you can go wrong with anybody you choose on there. It's how you want to approach it and how, what you're looking for each individual that you're looking for. You have experienced councilmen, you have, uh, people that have ran for office. You know, you, you're like me, the engineer, I guess, that kind of makes me stand out a little bit. Um, I just appreciate the opportunity, and again, uh, the short term is, is, would be nice for me to help out and then move on. So again, I appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to it. Either way, I, I'll still be in Irvinville.
All right. Well, great. Well, thank you. Thank you for your time and your interest in, uh, in, in applying tonight, and uh, we appreciate it, and that concludes our interviews tonight, so.
All right, good luck, guys.
All right, thanks, Robert.
Bye.
All right, uh, with that, then, uh, we are at the end of our agenda. I'd ask for a motion, a second to adjourn the meeting.
This is Pogi, I'd move to adjourn.
Okay, for a second?
Can't buy Blake.
Second, Russell.
Alright, all favor?
Aye.
Right.
Very opposed? Alright, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone, we will reconvene the meeting tomorrow at five thirty.
Five thirty, okay.
Yep.